This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for November 16th, 2020. In accordance with social distancing requirements, Governor Pritzker's Executive Orders 2020-43 and 2020-44, as well as Section 7E of the Illinois Open Meetings Act, 5 ILCS 120/7 print E print, and in determination by the Mayor of the City of Warrenville, this meeting will be held virtually. Persons wishing to provide comment are strongly encouraged to submit written comments via email at info@warrenville-il.us by 5:00 PM on the day of the meetings. Please be reminded, this meeting is being recorded. I have a roll call, please.
Alderman Ashauer?
Here.
Alderman Berry?
Here.
Alderman Bavir? Alderman Davalos?
Here.
Alderman Goodman?
Here.
Alderman Kreschel?
Here.
Alderman Widener?
Here.
Alderman Wilson? Alderman Wilson? Well, I know he's there. He's here. I heard him before, so.
We heard him earlier.
Must be on mute.
Yeah, I'm still here.
All right. Thank you. Alderman, Treasurer Brenner?
Here.
City Attorney Brooke Lenaman?
Here.
City Administrator John Coakley?
Here.
Assistant City Administrator Christina White?
Here.
Police Chief Ray Toriano?
Here.
Finance Director Kevin Dahlstrand?
Here.
Community and Economic Development Director Ron Menzer?
Here.
Deputy Public Works Director Phil Kukler? And Mayor Bremmel?
Here.
Thank you, Emily. We're now going to say the Pledge of Allegiance with the folks that are here at City Hall. I invite you to say it along with us at home.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It just got dimmer in here for some reason. All right, before we get into the business of the meeting, we have a yearly wonderful thing to do, which is to recognize Christmas Sharing and Christmas Sharing Week in the volunteers that provide that for us. So Fred, are you ready? I will go to the podium.
Easy to forget.
I just sent a dollar for every time I forgot to fill my mask on. Thank you for coming, Fred.
Thank you. Thank you all for participating. Thank you for your support.
You bet. Christmas Sharing Week 2020, December 6th through the 12th. Whereas Christmas Sharing, which began in 1969 and is celebrating its 51st anniversary, is a community-based organization serving families within the boundaries of Community Unit School District 200. And whereas Christmas Sharing, which originally served seven families, has grown over the years and served 800 families in 2019. And whereas Christmas Sharing, which originally served, excuse me, and whereas the year has brought turmoil and devastated the economy, and the effort to make Christmas a little more joyful for those in need is still present in 2020. And whereas collections will provide food and gift cards for the less fortunate, now therefore be it resolved that I, David L. Bremmel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, proclaim December 6th through December 12th, 2020 as Christmas Sharing Week in Warrenville to bring awareness that contributions made during this season of giving will help make the holiday season merrier for families who are less fortunate. Fred, thank you for coming and thank you for doing this, as always. That's for you. Please say a few words.
Okay. Thank you again for your support. This year, we've had to make some changes in our distribution method. This year, we're distributing 600 boxes being supplied by the Illinois Food Bank. We're distributing them curbside at the Church on Route 59, Wellspring, Wellspring Christian Alliance Church on Route 59 on the 15th, on the 11th of December. 200 families of, 200 Warrenville families will be supplied with, each with three boxes of food and gift certificates. And we're hoping it goes smoothly. We're hoping you have a nice evening for doing that. And again, again, thank you for your support. Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
This is the portion of our meeting that we set aside for citizen comments. We have three ways to comment. You can come in person. We have one person here this evening. We'll hear that person first, then we will ask those on the phone to speak up and introduce themselves and give their comments, and then we will address any email comments that come in. So our speaker this evening, Mr. Bob Seabird.
Bob Seabird, Albright Court. Sometimes you have to look back in history to see the future. I have some notes from Bill Stafford, who was the first mayor, and he dated everything, and this was dated on the 8th of September, 1972. And what it shows is a map, the condition of Warrenville at that time. And it's to note here that Warrenville Road was not Warrenville Road, it was Aurora Road. And when that road got past Herrick, east of Herrick, it was Belmont Road. What Bill did here is he identified the developments that were coming into Warrenville. We questioned it. The first was Emerald Green, which was 308 condo units, Winchester, 276 quad units, investment development, 137 apartments, Pulte construction, 446 townhomes, a total of high density of 1,167 units. And then there is also with Cattell Riverside, single-family homes, 22 single-family homes, bringing the total to 1,189 units. In that same month, I have the, that I picked up from when I purchased his property, all these items were left on the property, the payroll for the City of Warrenville for the month of September. Administration, Lucy Bernard, $3.50 an hour, $446. Rosemary Tierney, $2.25 an hour, $270. Kathleen Arnold, $55.50 part-time. Fred Olaf, who left and hopefully he filed this as income, $24.65. A total of $877. Administration, Police Department, the chief, Bill Phillips, $1,025. 10 part-time police officers, $3 an hour. So the total on the Police Department was $2,519. Street Department, there were two individuals, the supervisor at $800 and the worker at $3.25 an hour. So these people were able to function and keep the city going and to bring in these units of new development. They found out when we got basically to the 1980s that there wasn't sufficient revenue for the demands of the services that the city was facing. So they decided that the problem was with balanced economic growth. There were not sufficient or barely any corporate, business, or industrial development which would benefit the high density in the residential. Otherwise, the taxes would become very burdensome. So the city at that time knew that Elmer Chicago Stone was closing down, so for the next eight years, they planned the development, and this would be the golden goose. This would be the economic balanced growth that would be sustainable. Now, we come to 2020. In 2020, we see a return of high-density residential construction. We also have the problem of TIFs that delay any of the revenue for the services of the high-density from coming to the city. We also have the problem that now the high-density, their balanced growth that we did have is now dwindling, and we do not have additional areas to have this balanced economic growth. So what will occur is we will see increases in taxes. Can't do anything but increase because we do not have the growth that we needed. We come back to that. So I would hope that there would be some learning from the previous 48 years so that we would not continue high-density just because it's available. We would go to balanced economic growth so we can have sustainable growth for the citizens.
Thank you, Bob. We'll now go to folks that might be joining us on the phone. If you're on the phone currently and you'd like to make a public comment, I would ask you to please identify yourself with your name and address, and then speak slowly and clearly so we can capture your information. So please speak up if you're on the phone and you wish to make a public comment tonight. I don't hear anyone. Okay, do we have any email comments for tonight's meeting? All right, we have none of those for this evening, so we will move on. That's the last opportunity for public comment at this meeting. We'll go to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. Several things this evening. First of all, last week, First Ward Alderman Fred Bavir submitted his letter of resignation from the City Council. Fred has served the community as First Ward Alderman since 2005, and the city greatly appreciates his many years of service, and we're working on a way to honor him. With that being said, there is an opening on the City Council as Ward First, as First Ward Alderman, and I will entertain any nominations or letters of intent to fill the seat as soon as possible. If you're willing to serve the community in this capacity or know some willing candidates, send their information or your own letter of interest to my email address at davidbremmel@warrenville-il.us. Some recommendations from the IDPH. Last week, the Illinois Department of Public Health issued a press release with recommendations on how to keep safe as COVID-19 cases continue to rise in the state. For the next three weeks, the Health Department is asking residents to stay home as much as possible, leaving only for necessary and essential activities such as work. If working from home is not an option, buying groceries and visiting the pharmacy are other reasons that you would be out reasonably. The CDH and the IDPH recommend limiting travel no matter the distance. In our current situation with rising prevalence of the virus, attending even small gatherings that mix households, or traveling to areas that are experiencing high rates of positivity is not advised. And DuPage County is currently experiencing a rise in COVID-19 activity. Residents are strongly encouraged to continue following personal protective measures for the prevention and spread of COVID-19 by, one, wearing a mask, two, washing hands, and three, maintaining a safe social distance from people outside your household. And remember, stay home when you feel sick. It's very important to stay focused on working together as a community to slow the spread of the virus and keep our friends, loved ones, and neighbors safe. It is still a very dangerous situation, so please, please take care. That's all I have for this evening. Clerk? Thank you. Treasurer?
Nothing except that I may want to opine when it comes to the regular agenda finance update.
Okay. We'll put you on the list. Thank you. Alderman, let's go through the list as we normally do and give everyone a chance for comments at the beginning of the meeting, beginning with Alderman Ashauer?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry?
Yes, I am sorry that Alderman Bavir has resigned. I know there's only several months left until the end of our term, and I'm sorry that he couldn't finish that out. I appreciate all his hard work. I've sat next to him for the last almost 15 years, and he's been a pleasure to work with, and I've appreciated all his hard work. So we definitely will miss you, Fred. I hope you have a happy Thanksgiving and a wonderful holiday season. I hope to see you one of these days, out at summer days or Fourth of July, and when we're all done with COVID. But I wish you a lot of luck, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful working with you. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, Alderman. You speak for all of us. Alderman Davalos?
I was just going to say the same thing about what Alderman Berry said. We will all miss Fred. And yeah, I wish him well and be hard to replace him. So other than that, I don't have any comments.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman?
I also want to say my best wishes to Fred and all that life brings after this, and good luck to him.
Thank you. Alderman Kreschel?
Nothing more to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Widener?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to say thank you to Fred Bavir for his length of service as a councilman. In many ways, I think Fred really represents the City of Warrenville by all the things that he does and has done for the city, both in his official duties as Alderman and also as a citizen. Fred is always willing and able to help out in any way he can, so I appreciate that. I also wanted to tell the City Administrator, thank you for keeping us updated with all the COVID-19 facts, information. We receive that daily, and it's much appreciated from the standpoint. And I also wanted to thank the police. There's a number of signs out that register your speed when you're going past the signs, and it's noticeable. It's throughout the community, and I think it will go a long way to slowing cars down when they see that they're driving over the limit and the sign flashes that they're going too fast. So thank you, chief. I know some of those were obtained through a grant, and they are being put to good use. Thanks. That's all.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Wilson?
I have no additional comments.
Thank you. We'll move on then to City Administrator.
Thank you. Several things here, and I would be remiss if I didn't comment on Fred Bavir. I know we're going to miss him on the council as an Alderman, but I know we're going to see him, I'm going to see him around the community. He, in my 22-plus years here with the city, I have worked with him in many capacities. He was our street superintendent when I started, then he left here, and he was a very active member of the community, continuing, and then he was an Alderman and still a very active member of the community. He's got so many different roles and hats that he plays. I know we will see him all around, and I wish him the best of luck and certainly miss him on the council, but we won't miss him in the community because he's going to be here. Couple other things you'll see, and I emailed out to everybody today, there was a request from staff, when you get to the agenda item, to change the agenda, if you would simply remove item 6A, I'm sorry, excuse me, 6G, I'm reading the wrong note, about the tariff count agreement, we need to send that back to get the new form of the agreement. We've got some time to do that, if you just remove that item. Also, I emailed out a, or there was, Finance Director emailed out, revised page nine for the fiscal memo under Agenda Item 7A. You can tell it was a crazy week last week, including Friday, the 13th. There was just an error on one of the pages, on page nine, under the border field tax, and we've collected that with revision. Moving on, a couple of items about COVID-19. So Mayor was just talking about, as you'll see in all the publications and media, but just locally, Region 8, which is DuPage and King County in Warrenville, very local home, it's not other people everywhere else, continue to have rapidly increasing number of cases. There is actually a website that the Feinberg School of Medicine, as I learned about from some of my colleagues, where you can go on their website for Northwestern University, you can go on and put on our zip code and find out within a couple of days ago what our positivity rate is, and it's high, it's over 18% now. When you compare that to the growing 15% in the region, we're not, we're contributing to that. So we all want to keep being safe, and hopefully everybody gets well quickly, and there are not any more serious consequences. As the mayor also mentioned, last week, the Illinois Department of Public Health issued an advisory on their website requesting, I'm going to paraphrase if he did a better job with the facts, that people stay home for three weeks, it was posted last week, if you don't need to go out, basically saying avoid big family gatherings for Thanksgiving. That's painful for me. That's my favorite eating holiday throughout the year. And avoid traveling. We're trying to cut down the spread and the conventional wisdom, and I believe it is that holidays are just going to make it worse because people will gather with family and unintentionally, unfortunately, get more of infections. As a consequence of the, of being in the enhanced mitigations in this region, and tier two, as you know, the restaurants or bars endure, eating and seating is closed. And the increasing numbers and advice from the Illinois Department of Public Health and our own DuPage Health Department, the hours of operation at the Police Department will be reduced for the near foreseeable term. It'll be until further notice. We will let everyone know, it's going to generally follow the increases in the numbers in this area and these tier mitigations that we're under right now. The Police Department hours for the public will be reduced as of Wednesday to 8:00 AM to, I'm sorry, from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. City Hall hours will be reduced for the public to 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Both of those are weekday times. We are all still here. We will be working, but more employees will be working remotely, especially the administrative staff. And in speaking for City Hall, if we have more people working remotely, to reduce the possibility of a mass infection. If, sorry to say, my mindset has changed from trying to keep everybody from getting sick sadly to trying to reduce the number of people that get sick in the workforce. My responsibility is to keep the city operations going. Therefore, we're creating what I call a fire break. So if we get several employees sick, and there have been some exposures and some cases due to unfortunate things, we interact with the public and our own families, friend circles and all. We don't want the entire crew or the entire department down. Imagine, we're working to avoid this, but imagine if everybody in Finance was sick, or everybody in Administration and Community Development, or the entire Public Works group. So we're doing everything we can to keep people separated and to stay healthy and to do our best with that. But we'll have more people working remotely, therefore, we need to reduce the hours so that we can serve the people that do need to come in. We invite everyone, though, to continue using email. We're available by phone as always. There's a lot of ways to contact us or pay bills or do city business through the website. And, well, as you all know very well, we're doing meetings remote as most of the time. And these tier two mitigations have limited us to 10 people in the room. So fortunately, tonight, I think our maximum, we had at one time was six, but that even puts an impact and a crimp on city business. So we're going to continue to do the best we can with that. And as everything we've learned through this last nine months, everything keeps changing as soon as we get our footing. So if something, if there's more mandates or other orders, we'll have to adjust those hours as we go. It's not forever, but it will be for the foreseeable future, generally around the enhanced mitigations that our region is under. If we get back to a low number of infections and positivity, then we can open back up and get back to, I will say, the normal business that we've known for the last several months. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'd like to recognize how difficult it is and has been just to maintain some sense of normalcy here and to maintain our service levels and keeping our people safe. As John mentioned, things keep changing, and they're not always changing for the better. And the complexity of working out these schedules and isolating people and still allowing them to do their work safely has been an enormous strain, so I'd like to recognize that. Staff has been fabulous in their willingness to attack these problems and work hard to make sure that things continue to operate on a, on a level that can make us proud again of our staff. They're good people. They work very hard. They're taking a lot of stress, dealing with a lot of drama, and they deserve our thanks. So I just wanted to say that. City Attorney?
Just to mention that, as you said, things are changing so quickly, and it's almost like we're back in May, where there's just new executive orders and rules coming down from the governor, sort of on a weekly basis. So if any of you have questions, you know, we're staying on top of that, and feel free to reach out to John or directly to me. I'm happy to answer any questions about any new restrictions or regulations from the state or county. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Brooke. Move that, we'll move on now to the business of the meeting, and I ask for the approval of tonight's agenda and the removal of item 6G from that agenda, if I could have that, please. Alderman Widener?
Yes, with the removal of item G, I motion to approve the agenda for the November 16th, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
We have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
And Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. We also have two sets of minutes that need to be approved this evening. Also, I would ask Alderman Widener to make that motion.
Motion to approve the minutes of the November 2nd, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting and to approve the minutes of the November 9th, 2020 Community Development Committee Regular Meeting.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Great motion and a second. Any comments and/or questions on those minutes? Please identify yourself and speak up. Hearing none. You have a roll call, please. Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. The consent agenda for this evening reads as such. Item 6A, Accept Staff Recommendation, waive second reading, pass ordinance O2020-38, approving a temporary water and sanitary sewer connection incentive program to temporarily reduce certain water and sanitary sewer tap-on fees. B, Accept Staff Recommendation, waive second reading and pass ordinance O2020-39, amending City Code Title III, Chapter II, to increase the number of Class A2 liquor licenses from seven to eight. C, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation, approve the revisions to the 2015 Strategic Plan Diversity Goal, waive second reading and pass ordinance O2020-40, establishing the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity and Awareness Commission. D, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation and pass Resolution R2020-65, approving the change order number one to Task Force Number 11197222 with TerraCon Consultants Incorporated for Engineering Services in the amount of $1,500. E, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and pass Resolution R2020-66, extending the duration of the March 16, 2020 Declaration of Emergency until the adjournment of the next regular, special or emergency meeting of the City Council. F, Accept Staff Recommendation and pass Resolution R2020-67, awarding the contract for the 2020 Underground Storage Tank Removal to Styles Incorporated of Loves Park, Illinois in the amount of $111,520. H, Accept Senior Civil Engineer Hawking's Recommendation and pass Resolution R2020-69, approving the reduction of the Public Improvements Letter of Credit for Batavia Road Lot 4, Four-Lot Subdivision Project, accepting the bill of sale and placing the project into the two-year maintenance period. I, Accept Recommendation and pass Resolution R2020-70, approving the plat of easement for Batavia Road Four-Lot Subdivision Project. J, Accept Staff Recommendation and pass Resolution R2020-71, approving the reduction of the Public Improvement Security Bond for Duke Realty Butterfield Unit 6 Detention Pond. K, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation and direct staff to work with the City Attorney in the Summer Lakes HOA to prepare a stormwater management reimbursement agreement. L, Accept Community Development Committee Recommendation and direct staff and the Plan Commission to conduct a formal public hearing to consider a potential zoning ordinance text amendment supporting the establishment and operation of additional outdoor food and beverage seating improvements in the city. M, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and approve the reappointment of Robert Pebble as Ward 3 Plan Commissioner and Zoning Board of Appeals Member for a term expiring November 16, 2025. N, Accept Mayor Bremel's Recommendation and approve the reappointment of Elizabeth Chapman as Ward 1 Plan Commissioner and Zoning Board of Appeals Member for a term expiring November 16, 2025. O, Receive and File Minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting held on November 16, 2020, excuse me, November 5, 2020. P, Receive and File Reports, Report of Invoices Paid Up to November 11, 2020 in the amount of $115,721.89. And Q, Authorize Expenditures for Invoices Due On or Before December 7, 2020 in the amount of $267,191.14. May I have a motion, please, to approve the agenda as read this evening?
Alderman Widener moves to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Bremel.
Second, Alderman Davalos.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please? Alderman Ashauer.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Cressell.
Aye.
Thank you, Emily. The consent agenda as presented has been approved for this evening. We'll move on to our regular agenda. We have one item this evening.
No, we have.
No, we took G off. Yeah, G is gone. All right. The discussion for the regular agenda is the FY 2021 Financial Update as well as a discussion of the impact of the novel coronavirus pandemic. And we'll begin that discussion with the City Administrator, John Coakley. John?
Thank you. As we've been doing, I'll lead off and then let our Finance Director fill in some of the more details of the facts and numbers and all. As you'll notice, the, we have revamped the format of the report, the memo, trying to take into account some of the questions that came up at the last month's presentation. Hopefully, these, this new format will help. We've integrated some tables with the text of the, instead of just a lot of words and then an attached table, we also put in some graphs, which, once we did it, seemed like an obvious thing that just helps visually to present the information in a better way than trying to explain it verbally. But I, we will appreciate feedback on the format. As also, as I mentioned earlier, the page nine and then associated page 10, of course, because it was double-sided, we have changed because the motor fuel tax summation somehow between us, and I may well have been the culprit because I'm a great button taster, better than a typer, typist. We had the same information in the first couple of sentences under that part that was under the hotel tax. It was just incorrect on this section. So we have the correct information in there now. As you will notice, overall, it's not a glowing great picture. We know we're in a pandemic, and there's some severe economic impacts. So we've tried to just give some very brief information there. The city will be down revenue. There's no question about it. When you look at fund-to-fund, it does talk about we're a little bit less bad or a little slightly different. But you've got to compare, when I look at it across the entire city funds, we're going to be down a good amount. Some things are holding us up. Property taxes, sadly for all of us that pay them, don't really go down and can be projected to be pretty stable. That's the solid thing about them as the, as the City Administrator viewpoint. Other things like income tax has been holding pretty well. We hope that sustains. You know, there's a employment problem in the state and everywhere right now. One of the problems or concerns that I have is bigger ones across everything else. You look at the Capital Maintenance Replacement Fund, some of those revenues are just very, very severely impacted because the entertainment venues are closed that pay the, or just having minimal people attending that pay a lot of the money for our revenues in that fund, the entertainment amusement tax. And lastly, our hotels, as you know, we use that for a lot of events to attract tourism, but we also use it to provide funding for other funds like the Capital Maintenance Replacement Fund, the General Fund, and so on. So with that being in a very severely impacted, we'll be looking at for next year's budget as well. While our picture at the moment, we're holding our own, and we've made other cuts in expenses, as you see on the back, so that we have cash flow and we can operate for this entire year. We're also in the process of putting together next year's budget, and that's got to be on all of our minds. This isn't, this isn't just the current problem. It will have impacts going forward. I've got to add with something positive. As you hear in the news, there are vaccines that have been developed. They look extremely promising. It will take time to roll them out, but there is light at the end of the tunnel. I find some, I guess I use the word comfort in the fact that we can at least see that now. A few weeks ago, a few months ago, we didn't know if those were going to be actually coming out. We heard they might, but we didn't know. And now there are companies that actually have those and are getting ready to start rolling out for the first responders and health providers, of course, first. The rest of us in the public will be able to get those in coming months. So that will start turning things around. We just have to keep sustaining things until we get back to a point where there will be growth again. So Kevin, you can fill in some numbers or make other comments, please.
I'm not sure there's a whole lot I can add. The only thing I will add is that the income tax did not come in time to be reflected on this report for November. It has since come, and it still is outperforming our expectations by a little bit. It was, we received a little short of $99,000 in November. We were expecting about $85,200. So it is still performing a little better than most other things, although, as the Administrator said, there's no way to know if that'll go on. Right now, the General Fund projected loss for the year is about 16%. That'll be by the end of the fiscal year. What that, what that does not probably take into consideration is any of the new effects of the new restrictions that are going in place right now. And we will have to make some adjustments going forward. So I do anticipate that that loss of 16% will likely increase over the coming months as restaurants and bars and such certainly feel a great degree of impact from all the restrictions. That's all I have at this time here.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. And thank you to staff for this much improved, user-friendly report. It has a lot of good information that's very accessible to us regular folks. So thank you. Job well done. We'll go to the Alderman now for questions and/or comments about this report on our finances, beginning with Alderman Ashauer.
I don't have any questions. I appreciate the way that it's laid out. It is easy to use. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Berry.
Yes, same thing. This is so easy to read. It's, it's, you can see exactly where we're at without having to flip pages back and forth. And so this is, this is very nice. Thank you so much to Finance Department for putting this together.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Davalos.
Yes, yes. I love the format. It was great. And I appreciated the very last page that you added some of the events that were canceled, just to have a little bit, you know, it was under $100,000, but every $100,000 helps. So it's good to have that. Just a clarification, to make sure I'm doing this right. On the last page, on this, whatever it is, the last page, the reductions that were made early on, the road program, some personnel issues, we have not subtracted that yet from our totals. It's just out there. And as we're not spending it, it's showing up month by month by month, right? And then we'll do a final tally at the end of, of 2021, at the fiscal year, right? No?
Administrator Coakley?
Let me start that, and then Kevin will certainly correct anything if there's something that needs to be added. You're correct. We're in this main report that we're showing you, for example, is about the revenues and the effect on the revenues. In the back, it does note the expense cuts because it doesn't, it doesn't seem right to just be talking about the revenue reductions and not talk about any expense savings that we've, that the council and the staff has been working on. But we're not netting those out in any way. We're not, that's something we're trying to figure out how to work to. You are absolutely correct. At the end of the year, that would all be netted out, layman's terms here. But you'd have the actual expenses and revenues compared to the budgeted amounts that were there. That'll also be reflected absolutely in the audit, but that's nearly a year from now. We are trying to keep an eye, Finance Department in me, trying to keep an eye on where we are in terms of that bigger picture, though, because it's not enough just to show some reductions in expenses. We have to make sure that overall we're keeping within what we can expend. I'm not going to say we're staying within the budget because you all know that this was all falling apart as we were approving the budget. So it is a great guide still, but it's not, it's not as relevant as it would be in a normal year. I hope that answers some of your questions. You're correct. We will reconcile it all at the end of the year. But we're administering and monitoring it as we go through to make sure that we were keeping abreast of where we are with that.
That clarified it quite well. Thank you, City Administrator.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Goodman.
Yeah, I want to second what's already been said about how the new information in the report, the new context, the charts, definitely makes this much clearer in many ways, and I appreciate the work that staff put into that. I note on page five, you talk a bit about some supplemental general fund information. And that staff anticipates submitting additional requests to DuPage County for supplemental CARES Act funding. The note that several other DuPage communities have received supplemental reimbursements, I find very encouraging. Can you tell us a little more about that? I mean, what do we know?
Administrator Coakley?
I can give you what I know. It's, it's been a little bit less clear about some supplemental information. I learned about some of that through the regular calls we've had with the managers, through DuPage Mayor's and managers that we started during this whole pandemic and some of that information sharing. What I have gotten more clarity in the last, about why some communities got some supplemental, why some didn't. It appears, the best I've gotten, there was a write-up that did come from DuPage County recently through that venue, the conference, that a lot of it had to do with demonstration of need in their community somewhat based on their population makeup and a greater impact of COVID. I don't have those details. I can tell you for a fact that every single town in DuPage County has more qualifying expenses than the allocation that was given. And that's just a factor of math. And we will have additional expenses that we can submit should the county have some additional funding. I know that, I know they will have some additional funding still. I don't know how much that will be. It certainly will not be enough to cover the additional costs that all the towns could submit. We're looking into that. We're trying to get more clarity on that. We have, our Finance Director, not we, has advised the county, there's a name for it. It's a work group that is, is handling all the funding requests, then review them, vet them, and then send them onto the county board for approval, that we will have supplemental expenses that we will be submitting. I don't know if I'm hoping that answers some of your question. I don't have the exact program or details. It is not, I believe it's a case-by-case basis, not a set of rules that we could follow to get that supplemental qualification.
Okay, yeah, that is partly, partly what I wanted to know about that, you know, if there was a process, if we were able to see what the chances were. And it sounds like it's very speculative, and there is no particular process. But still, the fact of it is encouraging, and it might work out well, and anything is better than nothing, especially at this point. My, my next question is to do with the Capital Maintenance and Replacement Fund. I would echo what Administrator Coakley already expressed, his concern about the revenues in this fund being down by so much. So I guess my question for the Finance Director would be, of the cuts on page 10, which of them relate to the CMRP? And are there other cuts specifically that we're going to be forced to make because the CMRP is in poor shape with revenue? Or do you think that there will end up being, you know, fund balance transfers needed to make up the difference if the General Fund isn't quite so hard hit?
Kevin?
At this point, the list on page 10, where we list the items of the road program, the Police Department HVAC, and the purchase of vehicles and equipment, all of those are accounted for in the Capital Maintenance and Replacement Fund. So obviously, those then would be, at this point, delayed and not anticipated to be expended out of that fund during the year. There's some additional expenditures on there that don't come directly out of that fund. So, so those don't play into the CMRP at this point. At this point, it's extremely hard to know where that fund will end up. I mean, we are anticipating, for example, an 89% loss of amusement tax revenue. We budgeted a little over $286,000, and we're paying right now only collecting about 32.5 of that. So that, that's a considerable change in there. Local motor fuel tax, we are also expecting about an 18% loss in there. So those are some things that will affect that fund, and what we'll need to put into that fund at that point, I cannot say for sure, but we will be trying to project that as we go.
Okay, so inter-fund transactions. Okay, so inter-fund transfers might be necessary, but obviously we don't have the final numbers and we're only partway through the fiscal year. But I know that, you know, a lot of these expenses to the CMRP are the sorts of things where if you don't maintain it now, you're going to have to replace it soon or later. And so putting off expenses in that fund is often not a cost-effective way to save the taxpayers money. So if it's a question of moving resources around, that might be something we'll need to do. Thank you, I appreciate the update.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Kreschel?
No questions, just again, thank you for the, the new format. I think it helps to visualize, you know, we want to get these estimates and actuals, the bars closer together, so that's, it's good. I appreciate the thoughtfulness and putting this together in a more readable format. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Widener?
Thank you for the report. Love the bar graphs. Thanks.
Thank you. And Alderman Wilson?
I appreciate the new format, too. It makes it a lot easier for us to look at the figures and understand where we're at. You know, and it's all up in the air. We don't know. Oh, so many estimates are in there, year by year, month by month, rather. We have to look at it and find out where we are. And we make those adjustments at the end of the fiscal year, then we'll find out where we are. In the meantime, thanks an awful lot for all this new information. Thank you.
Very good. Everyone has been heard. Any additional questions or comments that anyone would like to make? Please identify yourself and speak up.
Yeah, this is the Treasurer. I got a question.
Go right ahead.
When I'm looking at the, the expenditures for invoices, fiscal, same period last year versus fiscal year '21, I noticed that there is about a 40% reduction. And it looks like, at least from what I'm looking at, it's mostly from the road projects. Is, am I correct in that assumption?
Are you talking, are you talking about the invoices to be paid? Or are you talking about in this report?
In the do. The ones that are due that are in this report. I, I, I look, I add them up every, 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 two weeks I add them up and I look at fiscal year versus fiscal year. And I noticed that there is a significant reduction for fiscal year '21.
Absolutely. The fact that we greatly reduced our road program means that we aren't laying those dollars out. One of the large goals of what we're doing here is actually to conserve the dollars to make sure that we are able to keep, keep operating as we have. So the fact that we're not laying out those dollars for the road program in and of itself, in and of itself absolutely helps what we're doing. So yes, the, the answer to that is the road program sure plays a large part in this in that we're not spending those dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, are you good, Larry?
Yeah, yeah, because it, it was about a 40% reduction year to year.
Good, okay, well, thank you. Anyone else? All right, hearing none. We have nothing under unfinished business listed for this evening. No new business listed. No need for a closed session. We do need, however, a motion to adjourn.
Alderman Davalos, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second, Alderman Ashauer.
Motion and a second to adjourn, and we do need to do that by roll call. So Emily? Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Kreschel?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Thank you all for your attending the seat, attendance this evening and for your attention if you're watching at home. Please, please, please follow some health safety advice that's been provided and continues to be provided going forward. Things will get better as Administrator Coakley mentioned earlier. The hope is on the horizon, so let's just carry on as best we can until we can get together more often and in bigger groups. Good evening, everyone.
Good night. Thank you.